Call to order. The special meeting of Annapolis City Council on Monday, November 26, 2018 will be called to order at 7:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to give 30 seconds to Alderman Peon.
No, that was before you called the meeting. Before you called the meeting.
To prepare the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. Lord, we thank you for this gathering this evening. Please guide us in our deliberations and allow us to remember that while we can disagree, we don't have to be disagreeable in pressing forward with the people's business. We pray for your guidance and give Thanksgiving at this time. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Here.
Alderman Tierney.
Here.
Alderman Peon.
Here.
Alderman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Here.
Alderman Henson.
Here.
Alderman Savage.
Present.
Alderman Arnett.
Present.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the, first item on the agenda.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition, no. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is ceremonial items, beginning with City Council citations to Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead, and the USS Sioux City.
Okay, so we're gonna go, we're gonna go first with Mark for the Dia de los Muertos. See how good my Spanish is? I have enough trouble with English, sir. Let's head up there. Cool.
Okay, rule of the day, people come forward. So, just to give you a little background, this is one of the coolest things we've done in the city. I was so excited that we, few marks leadership at Chiquita too, oh, kids from Chiquita's that, um, were presented was excellent. It felt like we were in another place. I was so impressed with it. Mark, we'd like to present this here.
Yeah, it was incredible, the first ever, so I'm taking all the people in the theater.
Be, where's Adriana? Come over here as well. But thank you to everyone. This was the first of many, which just represents, you know, Mayor Buckley's and the rest of the council division of One Annapolis and more inclusive community. So, thank you very much. On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we would like to confer upon you the City Council citation in recognition of your assistance with the first annual Dia de los Muertos.
That's what I said.
Day of the Dead on November 1st. The city commends your dedication, efforts, generosity, and your contribution of time spent supporting events focused on celebrating traditions and diverse culture. Together, we can encourage and promote respect, admiration, and dialogue between our communities, creating a united and strong One Annapolis. And so, this to Rosio Smith. Bernie Schneider. Ah, that's me, Schneider. Patricia Coles.
Cole.
Cole, sir. Jesse Ralales, great artist, thank you so much for the poem.
Thank you.
To, oh, Charlie Couples, what's his name, Homestone? Was he not here? Sean Snyder, thank you very much. And to the Annapolis Designs District, I guess David Hartford, you're accepting this on behalf of Designs District, thank you so much for your support and Adriana, forgot to include your name. Oh, there is. Thank you, there.
Would anyone like to say a couple of words to him?
Who, can anyone take Charlie's?
I would like to.
I'm Mike.
Mr. Mayor on the mic.
Wonderful.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Ralales, the first Latino Olympic artist for the United States, and I just want to say that it was an honor and a privilege to be part of this whole event. And I look forward to coming back next year, make it bigger and bigger every year. Thank you so much.
Yes. Show you a citation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
You got some street tools here, Sioux Cities, if you can forward, please.
Even though I'm retired Air Force, I'm, I also have my own little navy in my backyard, so I've been nominated. This was a special event, and I know a lot of you worked very hard to make this happen, and it was really exciting for the city of Annapolis. So, let me read the citation. "To the USS Sioux City Commissioning Committee, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we would like to confer upon you the City Council citation in recognition of the outstanding contributions of the members of the Sioux City Commissioning Committee to the residents, visitors, and businesses of the city of Annapolis. Occasions like these remind us how fortunate we are in Annapolis to be the home of the United States Naval Academy. In addition to the great honor of hosting the commissioning of this state-of-the-art ship, we are, we are, we were able to celebrate its entrance into the United States Navy Fleet with crew, their families and friends, and more than 500 residents of this, of Sioux City, Iowa. Thank you also for building partnerships with our outs, with many outstanding locally-owned small businesses to offer exclusive discounts and special deals to help welcome thousands of visitors to our town. The city of Annapolis will forever be linked with the people of Sioux City and, in the present and future crews of the Sioux City, USS Sioux City, given under our hands the great seal of the city of Annapolis this 26th day of November, 2018." Thank you.
And I just want to say a special thanks to Admiral Thorpe for his friendship and leadership. You had a crack team here. I can't imagine how you could have, I don't think it could have gone any better than what you did, especially with the moving target of the delivery date, and you pivoted when you needed to pivot, you delivered in more than any city could imagine. We are so lucky. For me, it's exciting in our first year to have something this big happen for us, so I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Do you want to say something? Yeah, can I say something? Mr. Mayor, Mr. Alderman, exactly right. This is a, seven of the, the team of people that did it and put a whole lot of heart and soul into their city in order to represent the Navy and the city and put it all together. And on behalf of the committee, we have a couple of presentations for you. We have three pictures, paintings. It's a, I think I could talk about it enough. It's a, it's a tradition in the Navy, when a ship gets commissioned, their partner's by the name of Peter Sue, who's fairly well-known, to do a painting like this. And so, we would like to present three of them. One of them, signed by the artist to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, you enthusiastically embraced this from the very beginning, and you really helped, helped us in your leadership, get the word out to the city, and thank you very much. And we have two additional ones, one for you to do here and, to put here in City Hall somewhere, as you, as you wish, and the other is the mayor's prerogative, to do whatever you wish to do with it. So, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, there you go. That's, that's for you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Love to get a picture with y'all.
Yeah, let's do that. Right here? You can get a picture.
I will.
New York.
And thanks for not throwing tennis balls at me.
So, for the record, for the, for the record, the women of Sioux City stood on, on the point at the Naval Academy as the ship left and threw tennis balls at them. That's for you.
This is the city ground to get you off to, so I haven't done it before, but because of this?
One more.
Joe, let them know that everyone will receive a copy of the citation. It's good seeing you. Okay, I would love it. And everyone will get a copy of the citation. Thank you. One other question, do you have others guests here, still from Sioux City, in the audience? Okay. Thank you. You said they're all, they've gone back to Sioux City. You should announce they're all gonna get copies of that citation. I told you.
Just, everybody will get copies of the citations, just to let you know, so we'll follow up on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No committee reports.
Get a little war and peace going on here, you guys are gonna be happy. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by committees.
Anybody have a report? All right, well, we did do it last week, so we could probably, right. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
Nobody out there commenting today? Awesome. I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, bummer. Anybody in the audience would like to comment? Okay, seeing nobody in the audience, we'll close the general comments. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is an update from the mayor.
Right. Cool. Thank you. First, I would like to take a minute to honor the life of Dick Lahn. Anybody knows Dick? He's a great, great guy who just passed away over the Thanksgiving break. Dick was a much-loved warrior for social justice, protecting and restoring our environment, and supporting one another, and looking out for our neighbors. He pushed for sustainability and buy local programs. He was a bright light for all, and we will miss him dearly. Rest in peace, Dick. This evening marks the last City Council meeting before council members and I, the four council members, I reach a one-year milestone. Anniversary day to becoming, uh, my, becoming mayor, so I'd like to begin by saying thank you for allowing me and trusting me to govern the city of Annapolis for the past 12 months. I will share my reflections on the past year in greater detail next week on the one-year anniversary itself, but I would like to say a few words of gratitude this evening. First and foremost, thank you to my fellow City Council members, half of whom I know are new to the city government, like me, for working with me over the past few years to improve our government and provide the best possible city service to our residents. There were tough moments, but many victories as well. I sincerely appreciate your patience while I navigate this new world of city government. We hit the ground running last December to set a tone of inclusion and One Annapolis that started with the inauguration. We built a team in the mayor's office to implement this vision of One Annapolis, and I would like to recognize their efforts to create opportunities for everyone in Annapolis to engage in city governance. We hired staff to address the growing needs of our African-American and Latino communities. We have nominated and appointed more women and minorities to our many boards and commissions, and will continue to do this, this, this evening with several new appointments to the Human Relations Committee, Commission. Our governing boards are beginning to reflect the true makeup of our town and efforts that was a top priority of my administration. We have created events that celebrate all members of our community. For example, I won Annapolis Launch, pop-up camps for kids, our Day of the Dead event, our proclamation of the June as Pride Month, and our march up Main Street and West Street to celebrate LGBTQ community. In the middle of this year, our city was devastated by the shooting at the Capital Gazette office. I'm immensely proud of how our city rallied for the families of those lost and for the survivors of the Capital Gazette family. This tragic tragedy has changed my life and my priorities as mayor. We honored and celebrated the lives of those lost and the importance of freedom of the press at our Annapolis Rising benefit. Thank you again to our business community and our friends, families, and neighbors who jumped in without hesitation to make that event a huge success. We marched for women, we marched for our lives, led by students who are fed up with the lack of action by elected leaders. These students have also inspired me to take more action and work harder to protect our schools, workplaces, and communities. But we also had great challenges. First, budget obligations that required tough decisions to increase taxes to sustain our current level of service and meet our financial requirements of the city. I would like to thank Teresa Sutherland for her outstanding leadership of this process that she took on at the 11th hour. I have complete faith that because of her expertise and leadership, our 2020 budget process will be much smoother and much more transparent and accountable. Teresa has shed great light on the accounting practices of the city, or the lack of, no, just joking, in the past. I have no doubt that her efforts and her team that she has assembled will be transformative, transformative for the city's government and its operations. I count on her leadership to move the city forward. I'd also like to thank the team that truly provides the most outstanding service to our, our residents. Leaders including Fire Chief Stokes, the men and women of the Annapolis Fire Department are some of the best in the state, and I was honored to visit each station on Thanksgiving to express my deep gratitude for everything they do each day to keep my family and all of our families and businesses in Annapolis safe. Police Chief Scott Baker, who has overseen community policing and efforts to significantly reduce crime while building trust with communities to combat violent crime and enhance public safety. The city government department team leaders, David Gerald, Rick Gordon, Archie Trader, Pete Gutwold, Jody Dickinson, Barb Smith, Jackie Guard, Tracy, Tracy Hopkins. You all are exceptional leaders, and your team are true professionals and make us all look good. And thank you, City Attorney Richard Melnick, for staying by my side. I would like to take a second to thank some folks here this evening that have literally held my hand to help me navigate these meetings. Regina? Tekeah? Tekeah not here? Cynthia? And Jacqueline. You all quietly manage me and this bunch around me with grace and humor. It is truly appreciated. And I'd be remiss not to say thank you to the two men behind the camera of these meetings, Mark Hildebrand and Julian Jacks, who staffed the city's TV station and have quietly, behind the scenes, upgraded the archaic technology of the city's council so that our meetings are truly public and accessible to all via web stripe, website, live streaming, cable access, and now Facebook Live. Yes, everyone sit up straight and speak. This is the joke here that they put in for me. The audience is much bigger than this. In other news, over the weekend, we had another shooting in Eastport. This violence must end. We'll be working with the community leaders and Annapolis Police Department to find solutions to violence and to the overdoses and fatal overdoses. Seven out of nine of the fatal overdoses in the city have been African-Americans. Fentanyl and other opioids are being mixed with common street drugs such as heroin, cocaine, marijuana. Prevention and education is critical to ending the overdose, overdoses, and addiction. My office has branded a public health initiative called Nap Town Anti-Dope Movement to raise awareness and provide resources to historically underserved African-American community within the city. We are working with community leaders, substance abuse providers, and mental health clinicians. Our staff will be going into communities, starting with the Newtown community. We will launch the Nap Town Anti-Dope Movement on Saturday, December 1, from 12 to 3 at the American Legion on Forest Drive. I encourage all of you to join me and Alderman Finlayson to listen to community members about what they want, what they need. We will have local artists perform positive music and poetry and free food and drinks to start a community healing process that brings together to learn from, listen to, and love one another. We will bring local experts, professionals onsite to help residents get what they need to be self-sustainable. We will have expungement clinics, financial education, resources, mental health professionals, addiction specialists, workforce development representatives, and members of the crisis response team. One way we can start immediately to stop the violence is to pledge to take the opioid-free Annapolis pledge. I have taken the pledge. I challenge my colleagues on the council to take the pledge as well tonight. And to those in the audience and anyone watching or listening, also, please take the pledge. Anyone and everyone can change, can go to change.org and search for Annapolis Opioid-Free or find the link at Annapolis.gov. I'd like to wrap up by inviting everyone to a few great events coming up. Chocolate Binge Festival is on Sunday, December the 2nd, starting at noon on West Street. Thousands of people are gonna be there. We've had a massive response to it. I would also like to invite everyone to the mayor's holiday, and mayor and city council's holiday open house on the first midnight madness of the season, Thursday, December 6th. Our open house begins at 4:00 PM and will conclude at 6:00. That evening will also be the, will unveil the latest City Hall Art Gallery exhibition. This one features the work of local artist Jeff Huntington, Future History Now, and Street Art Films. It's a very exciting exhibition. I hope everyone can stop by and then make their way downtown to local merchants, shop small and buy local for the holidays, please. Another one of my favorites is the Eastport Yacht Club Lights Parade, Ross's specialty. I'm not sure what Ross is doing this year, but.
I'm gonna get rid of it.
That's on Saturday, December 8th at 6:00 PM. And finally, I would like to thank my friend Janice Hayes-Williams for her service to the city. She will be returning to the county, to the new county executive Stuart Pittman, and we will all miss her. Thank you. All right, that was a long one, sorry. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include appointments. AP-40-18, the appointment of Dr. Deidra Denny to the Human Relations Commission. AP-41-18, the reappointment of Michael J. Keller to the Human Relations Commission. AP-42-18, the reappointment of Charles A. Hurley to the Human Relations Commission. AP-43-18, the reappointment of Helen F. Leitch to the Human Relations Commission.
Items on the consent calendar include appointments. AP-40-18, the appointment of Dr. Deidra Denny to the Human Relations Commission. AP-41-18, the reappointment of Michael J. Keller to the Human Relations Commission. AP-42-18, the reappointment of Charles A. Hurley to the Human Relations Commission. AP-43-18, the reappointment of Helen F. Leitch to the Human Relations Commission. AP-44-18, the appointment of Michelle Makandjula, the human, to the Human Relations Commission. AP-45-18, the reappointment of Wanda Mitchell to the Human Relations Commission. The reappointment of Rosemary Ketchmar to the Human Relations Commission. And that was AP-46-18. Business and miscellaneous, GT-2-19, transfer from contribution to the Self-Insurance Fund, transfer to the Capital Outlay Fund. First readers, O-45-18, fair housing, unlawful housing practices, referred to the Public Safety Committee. O-46-18, modification of use of unexpended proceeds of certain of the city's general obligation bonds. And that concludes the consent calendar items.
Is there any objections to the items on the consent calendar? Woman Henson?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask that O-45-18 also be referred to the Housing and Human Welfare Committee?
Sure. Woman Savage?
Uh, yeah. Could I be added as a cosponsor to O-45-18, please?
Okay. No objections to the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay. Hearing no objections, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Second. Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Old Woman Finlayson?
Aye.
Old Woman Barrigas?
Aye.
Old Woman Henson?
Aye.
Old Woman Savage?
Aye.
Old Woman Arnett?
Aye.
Old Woman Tierney?
Aye.
Old Woman Payton?
Aye.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The agenda has been completed.
All right. Is there anything else for good order?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce on December 6, we have an active shooter exercise coming up at J. Albert Adam Academy, a mouthful. And the Office of Emergency Preparedness is still looking for volunteers. About 50 volunteers are needed in addition to elected leaders. So if folks are interested, please reach out to the Office of Emergency Preparedness to get your assignment, as well as my colleagues, you too. Please reach out to Deputy Simmons. Unfortunately, it is the same time as the holiday party and some other event. But it's our exercise, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Nope, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I thought I'd filibuster, because this is too early for us. Just kidding. No, I have two bit of thanks. First of all, I would like to just thank the late Dick Lawn. I've known him personally for probably as long as I've lived here. And he's, even though he didn't live in the city, he's been deeply involved in the city. I got to know him through a buy-local, Buy-Annapolis campaign, trying to get a local currency. And so he's been very supportive of local businesses. He was in the string of pearls protecting open space. And just really inspiration. He, he's been so active. He went up to Philadelphia with one of the elections to campaign. And he was just doing such incredible work. And he is really just an inspiration. And I can only hope to be half as energetic and effective as I get older. So he will not be forgotten. And the other thing, I just wanted to echo, reiterate your thanks to staff and just again thank you for all the support staff, for all the help you provided.
Woman Payton?
I move that we adjourn.
Cool. Did anyone else want to say anything?
Second.
Rhonda?
Second.
Just in time.
So you get your voice on there.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against? No. Meeting is adjourned. I'm in shock. This has never happened before.
I think so, too.
Really? So we've, we made, we set the record for the longest one, and we've, we broke the record for the shortest one?
...